Yes ma'am, the mayor's coming on in here in just a few minutes.
Thank you. I just got in. I just got in. I was bored out of work. We didn't even, we didn't even miss it. I'm not surprised. I have got three, four put together because power delicious machine. I've got an extra.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, and it's my honor to call to order this December 6th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. Pursuant to the policies and procedures adopted by this council relative to virtual meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the city council and I to meet together physically. And due to this pandemic, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call vote. A council member will be recognized, raise their hand, and state your vote. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you. All of our council members are with us tonight. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. The agenda for tonight's meeting is comprised of the following items. We have two zoning petitions. Consideration of the city council's 2022 meeting schedule as well as the public comment period. The zoning petitions are listed as public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber, no, persons who will be here with us virtually will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will be given 15 minutes for presentation and then three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearing will be closed and the city council will consider the item. I will say that written comments were accepted on the public hearing items until 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting tonight. The public comment period, as you know, is a time set aside once per month that gives citizens an opportunity to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. When this virtual comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for comment, and the total comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. We're televised this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online. It's the city's website, and just select the watch meetings online option. Ms. Kenny, may we have the first item, please?
Item Z1, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Premier Park OPP NC LLC from LO to PBL. Property is located on the west side of East 14th Street, north of New Walker Town Road, located in the east ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, has anyone signed up to be heard on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I know that the petitioners here, there are a couple of folks that are on the meeting that I'm not sure what cases they are here for. So we may just want to ask if there's anyone here in opposition.
Is there anyone in opposition to this item? If so, please unmute and state your name and address. All right, hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll recognize Councilmember Cipio if you'd like to move forward or if you'd like a brief presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a brief presentation.
All right, Mr. Murphy, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of council. Before you receive in this case W-3501, it is a request from Premier Park OPP NC LLC to rezone a little over four acre piece of property on the west side of East 14th Street from LO to PBL for multiple uses. This is the subject property shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area Plan map in GMA 2 and on the edge of an activity center along New Walker Town Road.
Chris, we are seeing.
Ah, I don't know why. Let me go back real quick. About now?
No.
I'm afraid not. Well.
Think we've been hacked.
Let me do, stop share.
It's in the agenda packet.
Yes.
Can you refer to the agenda packet on this?
Mary Beth, is there any way you can pull up the slideshow?
We're working on that, Chris.
I apologize. I've never had an issue pulling them up, but for some reason I have screen one, screen two, and it says I'm showing screen two, but it's not popping up, so.
We've been hacked.
Seems that way.
What makes you think that? I don't know.
We got it, Chris. I believe Aaron might be sharing it. Okay, so let me start over. Again, this is a request of Premier Park OPP NC LLC for a little over four acres on the west side of East 14th Street. The request is to go from LO to PBL for multiple uses. This is the legacy map showing the subject property there on the north side of New Walker Town Road in GMA 2, close to the Activity Center. If you would, go to the next slide. Here is the subject property highlighted in yellow again on the west side of East 14th Street to the north northwest of the New Walker Town Road, East 14th Street intersection. If you'll go to the next slides. Here's the subject property again, still shown in yellow on the countywide aerial image. You'll notice Premier Park Lane, there are three existing structures on the site, and the property is currently zoned LO. We'll go to the next image. Here is looking north along East 14th Street at the driveway entrance to the subject property. Subject property is to the left. You go to the next image. Again, this is looking north a little bit further down, back down the road towards New Walker Town Road. The subject property again to the left. And if you'll go to the next image, this is looking south along East 14th Street. The site is off the frame to the right. And New Walker Town Road intersection would be just off the image down, down the road there. If you would just go to the next image, here is the subject property, looking at it from East 14th Street. There are three existing structures there. This is the east, northeast Winston area plan update, which was completed in 2015. It recognizes the existing LO office as the recommended land use, but again, this is in an activity center. And the requested PBL uses would be consistent with the area plan. If you go to the next image. The request would allow for a more diverse array of uses that could spur the redevelopment of an underutilized site. The request is consistent with Legacy 2030, and the request would assist with concentrating a mixture of uses within the New Walker Town 14th Street Activity Center. So with that, this was heard by the planning board at their November 10th, 2021 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request to council. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions by council members? Okay, Councilmember Cipio, I'd recognize you for a motion if you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, all of my colleagues. I do move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3501.
Sir, a second. Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Any further discussion of this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to just make one little comment. I love to recognize the developer of this property. Her name is Kenya Thornton. She is a young African-American female. It is wonderful to have someone so young coming in to revitalize her community. She is a force to be reckoned with, and she's going to get a lot of support in this effort of revitalizing this particular piece of property that is a prime location right there at New Walker Town Road in 14th Street. And I certainly hope that her efforts will be a great model for others to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. We'll now go to the roll call vote. Yes, vote approves this rezoning. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. Item Z2.
Item Z2, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Covington Ring Incorporated. From RM12-S to RM8-S, property is located on the west side of Murray Road across from Beck's Church Road, located in the north ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, do we have individuals who want to be heard on this item?
Mayor, we do have someone who has signed up in opposition. They were really more interested, but we do have someone who is here in opposition.
Okay, and it's a proponent here, signed in?
Not that I can find.
All right, it's a proponent. If you are, please unmute and state your name, please. All right, well, we'll go then to those who are in opposition. Mr. Murphy, if you could recognize them, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Opposition, Mr. Sapp, Mr. Bell, if you would please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record prior to beginning your remarks.
My name is Philip Sapp. I live at 5333 Shadowline Drive, and my property joins this on the southern side. And Mr. Bell, he lives on Iona Street, and he also joins it on the southern side. And our interest is, we had some questions for the person who is doing this. Number one, will there be an HOA for this property? And we were interested in what the vision for the property is. We were told it is like the properties that were put in out off of Turfwood Drive in the old Wedgewood area. I was hoping someone could address that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murphy will cover some of that when he gives the report of the planning board. Mr. Sapp? Mr. Bell, want to have any comments?
No, sir. Those were the same questions we both had of this property.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Sapp, we will try to answer those tonight. If not, we'll certainly get those answers to you from the developer. All right, anyone else out there who wants to be heard on this item? Please unmute and state your name.
He's not even there.
All right, well, I will therefore close the public hearing, and I'll ask Mr. Murphy to give the report of the planning board, please.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to call, and if, there we go, I was going to ask Aaron if he would mind sharing his screen again to avoid technical difficulties. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim, members of council. This is case W-3502, which is a request of Covington Ring Incorporated to rezone an approximate 21 acre piece of property on the west side of Murray Road across from Beck's Church Road in the north ward from existing zoning of RM12S to proposed zoning of RM8S. This is the subject property shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area map in the suburban neighborhoods growth management area. If you go to the next slide. This is the subject property shown, highlighted in yellow. Again, you'll notice it is on the west side of Murray Road across from Beck's Church Road, just north of the Murray Road Shadowline Drive intersection. And that also includes the mail notification area. If you'll go to the next slide. This is the same property shown, highlighted in yellow on the aerial image. Again, on the west side of Murray Road there across from Beck's Church Road. If you go to the next slide. Here is the, subject property is to the left. This is looking north along Murray Road. The Murray Road Beck's Church Road intersection is right there in the image across from the red zoning sign. If you would go to the next image. This is just another view looking north, looking more at that intersection. Again, the subject property is to the left across from Beck's Church Road. If you go to the next image. This is looking south along Murray Road. The subject property is to the right. If you go to the next image. This is the North Suburban Area Plan update, which was completed in 2014 with a recommended land use of intermediate density residential eight to 18 units per acre. So the subject request is consistent with the recommendation of the land use plan. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan associated with this request. It's showing public streets with townhome units fronting the public streets. And it is shown with the public street aligning with Beck's Church Road intersection at Murray. Open space off to the west, and then an emergency access back out to Murray Road for an emergency fire protection. A couple of stormwater ponds there as well. If you would go to the next image, these are just the sample building elevations that were included with the request. And if you'll go to the next image. In summary, the area plan recommends intermediate density residential development between eight and 18 units per acre for the subject property. Proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding area and area plan recommendation. The request will not drastically increase traffic along Murray Road and is a reduction in the number of units from the current RM12S zoning approved on the site back in 1981. And I had actually modified my slideshow a little bit based on some information that we had and some discussions that we had as a staff internal. I will just note that the trip generation for the request is 621 trips down from 918 trips would be allowed under the existing RM12S zoning. But there is some existing background traffic along Murray Road. And as part of that background traffic, there is, the Murray Road is approaching, the Murray Road Beck's Church Road intersection is approaching the need for a traffic signal. So there is a recommended condition of approval that requires a fee in lieu of the signal design that will pay for the city to design a traffic signal at the Murray Road Beck's Church Road intersection. And this will also, while that study is being completed, enable staff to be able to determine a funding source for the signal. So with that, if there are questions related to that, I believe Deputy Director of Transportation Jeff Fanzler is on, is on the Zoom meeting. But if you would go to the next slide, and we'll just complete this portion and then see if there are any questions. This item was heard by the planning board at their November 10th, 2021 public hearing. At that time, there were several speakers that spoke in opposition, but all the speakers spoke on traffic concerns at the Murray Road Beck's Church Road intersection. Planning Board heard those concerns but did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the request to city council. And I will say that the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. And again, we do have Jeff Fanzler on the line, who would also be able to answer any traffic concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any questions to Mr. Murphy at this time? Mr. Clark?
Did the petitioner agree to the chat with Tavon Louva doing the traffic study themselves?
They did. That was actually a condition of approval that was already a part of the report that came to council. It's just I amended my staff report to point that out, but they had, they had agreed to those conditions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Sapp here. I too have issued with.
I'm sorry, the public hearing is over with. We're dealing with the matter now within the city council. If there are other questions, we can certainly get back to you with those. I don't see any other questions of council members. I'll therefore recognize Mayor Protim if she would like to make a motion at this time.
Yes, and then I'd like to make some comments if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I move for approval of, one, the statute, statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3502.
Thank you. Motion to second. Please go ahead, Mayor Protim.
Again, I hear and have heard from the citizens on Murray and Shadowline, Beck's Church. Again, I live over here near that area, and I travel it a lot. There's been, just like in other, some areas of the city, a lot of production, housing production taking place. I have talked with staff about if our priority is housing and we want to encourage the development and production of housing. It is now our responsibility as the city to ensure that we look at traffic patterns even when people are planning to do the development. And we need to get ahead of it. And in the past, a lot of cities, and even Western, didn't do that. We plant, we allowed the development because we needed it and we wanted it, but we didn't look deeper into the domino effect of housing development in communities and roads, particularly roads, that were not constructed to handle the volume of traffic that we're seeing. Because when they were made, everybody didn't have a car. They were luckily to have one car. Now houses have five cars sometimes, and they all go out on these little roads, much like Councilmember Burke's issue up on Oak Summit. That when you get the development and you don't think about what we need to do to help prepare to make sure that citizens are safe and that they can leave their neighborhoods, the neighborhoods they've been in, and also the new people that will be moving in. We have a school. We have a couple of schools in the area of this site. And a lot of parents drop their parents off at Northwest Middle School. And we have North Side High School, and then we have the couple of elementary schools. So I'm disappointed that the developers aren't here to speak. But I feel like the city is moving with due diligence to ensure that we heard the citizens of the north ward in the Beck's Church Shadowline Murray Road area to look at the traffic signal and the patterns and do the study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Yeah, I'm very happy that you're moving ahead with that traffic study already. Councilman McIntosh?
I just want to echo what Councilmember Mayor Protim was talking about. You know, we've got Sides Road, we've got, you know, Oak Summit, we've got Ransom Road. All these new developments that are coming in, and we desperately need the housing. They're all going to place a strain on our transportation system. And so getting ahead of it, budgeting for it, because it's not cheap to make these improvements. But we need to go ahead and be proactive about it and not assume that we can pass all the costs on to the developer because the developer's just going to pass them on to the home buyer, and then we're talking about an affordability issue. So that's something I know staff is well aware of, and I think we just need to get down to brass tacks and talk about how much money and where it's coming from, about how to get ahead of it.
Good point, Councilor. Any other comments, council? Council, Mayor Protim, you'd like, you want to say something? You're muted.
Councilmember Cipio, but I do want to hear mayor from Mr. Fassler, from DOT, the Deputy DOT after Councilmember Cipio.
Oh, I started Councilmember Cipio. I didn't see you. You're on a different screen. There you are. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments about as we develop, have more housing in our neighborhoods. The necessary task that we have, as I said, is making sure the roads are going to be adequate. I used to live off of Murray Road, and it was very busy then, and that was over 10 years ago. But just like we have the same issue on Purnasville Road, lovely developments, we got the land. But the, the need to address our major arteries is, is real. And it's not just to the north side of the city. It's all over the city. And so I would hope that our Department DOT will move swiftly in looking at these major arteries and figuring out a way that we can make our roads wonderful for our residents to travel on, even the new ones that are coming.
to travel on, even the new ones that are coming, because we're going to have this happening over and over. But that's where we can be very proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fanzler, would you comment on the study that's going to be done there at this intersection and any other improvements you're looking at?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, sir. And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Hope you all can hear me okay. I'll just, I'll speak real briefly. You heard the report by Mr. Murphy and just to echo, one of the things that we're dealing with is some traffic in an intersection that's at that point where it needs some attention and then we have a development that's just adjacent to that. And how do we come in and make those recommended improvements and facilitate a need without passing the burden that really is, is a burden today? They're just making it a little bit more intense. So we're trying to find that ground to where it makes the most sense. And so to do that, we're facilitating what was mentioned is that traffic analysis to indicate the need, to get some design efforts done. And in the meantime, staff will be identifying a funding source to implement that design. We understand the need. I think we're going to partner with this development to really present a package that we can, that would benefit their site and benefit the background traffic in the area. And we'll come alongside and then over the next few years, look to identify a funding source as this thing is being built, as the design is done, to facilitate implementation of that recommended improvement. I will just mention briefly, there are, they have committed to some other improvements that will help. They're going to be putting in some turn lanes and doing some other things that will really help get traffic out of the through lanes and make the north-south movements a lot better. So I think that they have put their best foot forward and this blended effort between the developer and the city will provide a good package moving forward to help this intersection facilitate the traffic needs. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. Mayor Protem, did that cover the points you wanted covered? Okay, great. Councilwoman Larson, then Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you. Because the public hearing was truncated because there's no representation from the petitioning organization and the opposing party did not get a chance to respond to any comments, I would appreciate the opportunity to hear from them once again if they, if their questions were not answered or if they have additional comments based on what they did here. I think, I think they deserve the right to go ahead and have their second hearing. Just because the opponents were not present does not mean they should not have the chance to go ahead and express what they heard from planning staff, et cetera. So could we reopen it for a briefly minute?
Go after the rebuttal, Councilwoman Larson, so they wouldn't have heard that anyway. And I think we gave them every, they had plenty of opportunity there, so.
I think they had a question and they didn't get, they got cut off, is my concern.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Are either one of these roads Murray or Beck Church Road, state roads?
Mr. Fanzler?
Councilmember Clark, they are not. These are, this, these are both city streets and Beck's Road turns to State Road a little bit farther to the east.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have motion in the second on the floor to approve the zoning. We'll move to the roll call. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. And Mr. Fanzler, if you would please follow up and Mr. Murphy, follow up with Mr. Sap and Mr. Bell and if we can answer any questions and maybe share the, the images of the houses and so on that, that they requested there. That'd be great. All right, item Z3.
Item Z3, consideration of city council's 2022 meeting schedule.
Councilmembers, you've had a chance to look at the schedule and there are a number of changes having to do with holidays and various meetings that the council would be out of town for. If you're ready, I would certainly entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2022.
Move for approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Adams and Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Mayor, Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? We'll move to the roll call. Councilwoman Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Monday?
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor? Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We have our work program and working schedule for next year. We'll now move to item Z4.
Item Z4, public comment period.
Again, this is a time, once per month, we invite the citizens to address us on matters that are germane to the city government. We'll have anybody signed up, but we do understand there might have been some folks on the call that we can't communicate with. So if you're here to speak at the public comment period, if you would unmute and state your name and address for the record, please. Hearing no one, I will close the public comment period. Certainly want to, this is our last meeting for this month, city council. I do want to wish our city, our citizens a very happy holiday season. And I personally want to thank the first responders of our city who will be working during the holiday, keeping us safe while we're enjoying our families and so on. And just really appreciate their work and their dedication and commitment to our city. Councilmembers, anyone else want to add something? Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I want to thank the Winston Salem J.C.'s and I want to thank Parks and Recs of the City of Winston Salem for putting on a wonderful tree lighting ceremony. The event was amazing. The attendance was outstanding. The crowds were big and I just think that, that we did it good. We did good. And I just want to let them know, please, they just did a tremendous job. I, I mean, I've seen Christmas trees incorporating for decades, but I've never seen one like I saw Saturday night. It was phenomenal. It was, and the choir, the whole program was fantastic. Thank you.
That was, I agree, Mayor Protem. It's one of the best crowds we've had in a long, long time. Of course, having 60-degree weather certainly helped do that, but it was, it was great. Well, great. Well, thank you, everyone. I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second.
Adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye. Christmas.
Anyone not in favor of adjourning, please say no. We have unanimous approval to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.